This is the Monday, December 12 meeting, 2016 of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anybody else in the audience who was in Telegram and Gazette? On that note, can we all stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, we have public comments. I have one signed up tonight. I heard your name earlier, Mr. Page. I guess this is for a second time. Do you want to come up and speak on this? And it would be for your call in Santa Claus.
Yeah, it's that rude producer that you guys got. Thank you. My name's Wayne Page. I live at 900 Common Road, but this year, as we do for the past 14, 15 years, we have a call-in show for children to call Santa and talk to him about what they want for Christmas. And it will be December 15 from 6 to 8, which will be Thursday. And the number is 508-832-35... No. 30... No. 5323. I keep going to say my number. Thank you. And hopefully, everybody will watch and listen to the kids, because it's one of the best things we do in this town, is have these little kids call up Santa and ask for what they want for Christmas. And thank you. And I have one other thing I'd like to say if you're all set with this part of it.
Go ahead.
I would like to thank whoever did get the monuments finally painted. I want to thank you. It looks good. And thanks for finally coming together.
Thank you. Yes, it's a good program, and I've had a chance... I have never called it, but I've had a chance to sit and watch it. And it's definitely entertaining when some of the calls that come in. But thank you very much for that service. Okay, the next we have, we've got a vote on the town manager reappointment. And that's a vote on the reappointment of her contract and waiver of residency. Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board appoint Julie A. Jacobson as town manager for another three-year term of office effective January 31, 2017, through January 30, 2020.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now, we have a motion on the residency. Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board waive the residency requirement in Section 3.05 of the Town Charter with respect to the incumbent town manager for the length of her employment.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have presentations of public hearings. The first we have is a hearing on the alleged violations of secondhand dealer's license Adams Estate Jewelry at 871 Southbridge Street in Auburn. Yeah, that's at 7:05, so we'll just hang on just a couple of minutes there, and then we'll move on. I guess, can we move up the gift acceptances? We'll do that, and we'll go through those.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to move up Agenda Item 8E, gift acceptance.
Okay. Motion been made in second for 8E to be moved up. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right. First off, we have for the fire department, total of $200. First, from the local, number 330 Brotherhood of Utility Workers, for $100. Second, Anne Marie Johnson, $50 to the gift account for the fire department. And Jeanette Buzinski, $50 to the fire department gift account.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Brotherton?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept with gratitude.
Second. So the motion been made in second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Now, we have for the parks department, from Sterns Electric, there's goods of $400, repair electrical box at Goddard Park, and the equipment and services of $450, the bucket truck, and one man to help with putting lights on the tree. Total of $850. This was for the lighting of the Christmas tree at Jewelry Square.
Make a motion that we accept with gratitude, and a letter be signed by the chair.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Now, to the DPW for Home Depot, goods received for $8,000 value for siding. And that goes to the Craftsman Division at the DPW.
Chairman, I make a motion that we accept with gratitude with the addition of a letter being sent, signed by the chair.
Second. So the motion made in second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. And then to the Pappas Complex, Joyce Kimball, in memory of Chris Engel, for $100. The Sheriff's Department, with Sheriff Louis Evangelitis, in memory of Chris Engel, for $250 for the Pappas Complex. And then Karen Zagula and Peter Lindgren, in memory of Chris Engel, $200 for the Pappas Complex.
Motion to accept with gratitude. Mr. Chairman?
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. And then to, from Kathleen Sabina, donation to the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound of $50.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, it is 7:05, so we'll get back to our agenda. And our representatives of the business here, as well as our police officers. Is there anybody else here from the business? Okay, is anybody else going to be speaking on this tonight? Okay, we open the hearing?
Make a motion that we open the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay, motion been made in second to open the hearing. There is nobody else, so would you please stand? We'll swear you in. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help God.
I do.
Thank you. Okay. All right, the notices have been given regarding the hearing. We have received an email from Detective Ross regarding this tonight. And the notification has been given to the owners of the business. So I guess we'll turn it over to the Police Department and give us an update of what has happened.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, this is Detective Vincent Rossi. He will read a brief synopsis to you as to the allegation that's before you tonight. At that time, you can make a determination as to whether or not you believe there was a violation that occurred.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. This was back on 11/16 of this year, approximately 13:30 hours, I went to Adams Estate Jewelry for a compliance check relative to the purchase of secondhand jewelry. This was primarily due to the fact that I hadn't seen any information from this business posted online in recent weeks. I arrived at the business and spoke to the owner's mother, Mrs. Rivera. I identified myself. I told her that I needed to see the book of purchases made by the business. She told me that she didn't know where Adam was keeping the current records. She then picked up a bundle of papers held together by a metal binder clip. I then asked to see those records, with her telling me that they were old records and there were newer ones, quote-unquote, somewhere. I explained that the bylaws governing these records were quite clear, stating the records of sales need to be available for the police for viewing while the business was open. I then told her that she may want to call her son and ask where these records are at this time, so I could view them. She did try to call him or text him, but received no response that day while I was I was then told that the Internet service for the business was currently not working. I asked how long since it was, that it was working or turned on, and was told about two weeks. This is also clear in the bylaws, it's saying the records shall be electronically transmitted simultaneously to the New England State Police Information Network. The last electronic transmission to Nesbitt from the business was on 10/29 of 16. So with that, I returned within 48 hours and was given updated records after they were told that they were in violation of the record-keeping part.
Is any board members going to think, questions? Yes, Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. Is it customary for the applicant not to be present, either here or a representative?
I guess I'll turn to Ms. Jacobson. Have we heard anything from the owner of the business that they were going to be here or not going to be here tonight?
No, through the chair. They were notified.
Yes, we do have those records in front of us.
But we have not heard back from them. Ordinarily, there is somebody present from the business.
Okay.
If I can just follow up.
Mr. Carpenter.
I know from our procedure that it's customary for the hearing to be closed. Would it be appropriate to hold this open and attempt to get in contact with that individual so that they may have an opportunity to give their side of the story, for lack of better
I would say yes, in most cases, but there's been no contact made with the owner. They have been notified properly. The Police Department is here and given their side, and I would like to have the owners here also, but they are not here tonight, and they haven't properly notified. So I would like to continue this hearing tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't mean to stop the hearing. I just don't want it to be closed tonight. Perhaps something happened in between now and then. Certainly, they may have intended to come, and something may have happened, so I wouldn't want to not give them the opportunity one more time. If they didn't come to the next meeting, then obviously, we'd have no choice but to, you know... I just don't want perhaps a family emergency or some other emergency have prevented them from being here tonight, and then we close the hearing and not give them an opportunity to speak to whatever.
Again, they have been properly notified, and there's been no notification to us that they were not coming tonight. But I'll leave that up to the board to decide what they wish to do. Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, Detective Ross, was the owner aware through, you know, communications with his mom, that you were standing there, you know, voice messages she left or whatever, like that she was attempting to contact him because the police were there looking for the records?
She did say she sent him a text.
Okay, and he was aware that the police were there looking for these records, and he didn't respond?
As far as I know, yes. Apparently, he's working another job during the day, and his mother runs the business.
Is that my name, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich, go ahead.
So have you had any conversations with the owner? Any follow-up conversations with the owner regarding this? Yourself? I know he's not here tonight. Have you had any conversations with him regarding this? Has he communicated with you at all?
No, he hasn't.
Has he attempted to communicate with you?
I haven't received anything.
Okay.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, one last question. Have you had any other issues with this business? Are you... I mean, this is what you do. You're a detective. Did you find that it was strictly the Internet, and they just got lax? Or do you feel that this could become a pattern?
I've spoken to him other times and refreshed his memory on the bylaws.
Thank you.
Over the course of the year, how many times do you stop into these businesses and inquire about the paperwork?
Probably six or eight.
Okay. And every time you go in, you ask for the documents, to check them and be sure that all is in place?
I do. Usually, they can be monitored online. And I do it right from my desk through the New England State Police Information Network, but occasionally, I do stop in.
Okay. And you had mentioned something about that there was a lot of old records in a metal binder. It sounded like they were old records. Is there any way to interpret, you know, whether those records are, you know, accurate and what's happened to them over the course of time?
From what I saw, they were accurate. The last one was dated 10/29.
Okay.
The same as the last electronic transmission was. They are required to hold them for three years, I believe, according to the bylaw. I haven't had to go back that far, but the stacks she had looked like it was covered from the last few months.
Okay. And how often are they required to transmit that information to that database?
It's supposed to be simultaneously.
Okay, so when they do some business, it goes right into the database after that transaction's been completed?
If everything's working correctly, yes.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm looking at it quickly. I don't recall before we consider... I think that the detectives have certainly shown us that they are in violation, but before we consider not closing the license, is there an appeals process on this? I'm not remembering if there is, if the applicant can appeal this. I don't... I mean, I think, I believe it's only through the courts.
And I think you're correct there. It's be through the courts and will not be through this board.
So I know we're in a position here where we don't have the license over, and the procedure is to close the hearing, then ask the chief if he has a recommendation once we find whether there's been a violation. I, as I stated just now, I feel that certainly there's evidence to show that they're in violation of their license, and would be interested to hear what the chief's recommendation was. I'm not sure if we can go out of order on this, but, you know, I would make a motion that the facts presented find a violation of the statute by law or regulation has occurred.
Okay. Motion been made. Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second it, and then we can have discussion.
Discussion, yes.
So it's my understanding that they're supposed to have a book, and they're also supposed to be on the Internet. The book is supposed to be bound, not a three-ring binder, but a bound book that can't be changed, can't be erased, can't be modified. Is that correct?
According to what I read, yes. This book that he keeps isn't quite up to those standards. It's actually loose papers.
Is he aware that he's supposed to have this? It sounds like you've explained it several times.
As far as I know, he was given a copy of the bylaws.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Have you or the chief got anything else you want to add to this tonight?
I do not. I don't either, sir.
Okay. All right, I'm going to leave it up to the board. I know that the police have been notified. They are here, and they have given their report. The owner of the business has also been notified. He's been explained several times about the bylaw and how it's supposed to be approached. And it seems by the evidence we have in front of us that there has been a violation noted. And now, I want to see what the board wants to do about the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to withdraw my motion that's on the floor.
Okay, and that's... Second.
And now, I'll make a motion that we close the hearing.
Okay.
Second.
So, okay, the motion's been made in second to close the hearing. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye. Okay.
So I'd just like to hear if the chief has a recommendation.
Yes, please.
I would make a recommendation of a one-day suspension of the license in keeping with your current existing policy.
Okay. And this is the first occurrence this year that they've been in violation, that they've been brought to us. We have no other record for this year. I would be able to accept that as a... But also to notify them in a letter that this hearing has been held, they were found in violation, and that they are required to be here at, you know, when they are requested. That would be my feeling, but need a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that this board finds that a violation of the statute by law or regulation has occurred regarding Adams Estate Jewelry, 871 Southbridge Street in Auburn. That's my first motion.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in seconded. Sharon, have you got that?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'll abstain, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we impose a one-day license suspension on Adams Estate Jewelry, 871 Southbridge Street in Auburn. And that suspension to be served on a weekend day.
On a weekend day? Okay. And we should probably put a date to that.
Whatever the board's pleasure is.
Okay.
Just whatever the Saturday is.
This Saturday, I believe, is the 17th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Saturday, December 17.
Second.
Okay, so motion been made in second for the suspension for one day, a weekend day, December 17, Saturday. Mr. Bertham?
Mrs. Goodrich had mentioned that the only way that it can be appealed is through court.
I believe so. It has nothing... We don't have anything in our bylaws regarding that.
So would we give enough time before the suspended day to give them the ability to try to do that, if they want to?
Through the chair, if I may. While we were sitting here, I just looked up Mass General Law. It's Chapter 140, Sections 202 to 205, and there's nothing in there in Mass General Law that provides for any appeal process. The licensing authority is the issuing authority, may revoke, suspend, or amend. But I don't see anything in here that provides for an appeal. It doesn't mean there isn't a law somewhere else, but in the law, that's referenced from your own policy. Back to Mass General Law, there's no provision.
Okay. So, yeah, Mr. Bertham?
I want to make them understand that, you know, that we do follow through with things, but on the same token, they're a retail store in the town of Auburn. We're trying to do what we can for businesses in the town of Auburn. So being the week before Christmas, I'm not sure that, you know, and being their first time, that we're actually giving them a one-day suspension, that, you know, I'm okay with the weekend, but I'm not sure that I'm okay with, you know, a weekend day, the weekend before Christmas, which could potentially be one of their bigger times. So I want to send a message, but I also don't want to really give a jab financially to the business, you know, on their biggest potential income day of the year.
The motion's been made, and it's been seconded. Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I absolutely appreciate your comments, and, you know, we have businesses who follow the rules every day, all day long. And based on the testimony from the detective, I just feel that this business owner made no effort to contact the police, to provide them the records that they wanted. They just didn't do anything once they were caught to make it right. They didn't even return a call from the detective. That's why I felt strongly that we needed to send a strong message. I'm not looking to hurt the business, but we have businesses, we've been through this, we've been through hearings like this. We have businesses who follow the rules, who get their licenses, who follow all the conditions of their licenses. Every day, once in a while, you get someone who violates their license, and they've come in here, and they've apologized, and they've taken corrective action. You know, I'm concerned that with technology today, that the business owner didn't even send an email, send a phone call to either the Police Department or us to say that he wasn't available tonight to defend his position. So I just... I'll stick to my motion, but if anyone wishes to amend it, it's a wish of the board.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, the motion been made in seconded for December 17. Being no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And that's it, and we thank you, gentlemen, very much for being in here tonight, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Same to you.
Thank you. Now, we have a motor vehicle, Class II in auto repair license, all wheels detailing and auto sales at 496 Washington Street in Auburn. Is there anybody here? Yes. Would you care to come up and sit with us here, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Donald O'Neill. I'm a lawyer with an office in Worcester. I'm here this evening with Matt Dumis of...
Welcome.
Marsala, thank you. LLC is the property owner, and also Roland Tremblay, who is the prospective lessie. His business is all wheels detailing and auto sales. Now, this is property is at 496 Washington Street. Previously, it was Bob the Baker's used car lot. We had gone to the zoning board back in October and got permission to add a repair service to the garage. It is in the Highway Business District, Aquifer, but it's in the Aquifer Zone, Aquifer 3.
Okay.
And we did obtain their approval, and basically, the condition, one of the conditions was the oil separator would have to be installed, which, of course, we agreed to and had planned on doing anyway. We also had gone to the planning board in November, November 22, for site plan approval. Anything that requires a special permit also requires a trip back to the planning board for site plan approval. As part of that process, we were able to reconfigure the lot layout, and we increased the number of spots with some stacking from 11 to 20. And as I said, we were just there a couple of weeks ago and had gone through that process. I think they eliminated one spot, which gets us down to the 20.
Okay.
So we're here this evening, basically, to seek your approval for both... Mr. Tremblay has been operating at a different location in Oxford. He would hope to start here, starting January 2. It's January 1, he told me, first, but it's actually January 2, so first of the year, get started. And he has run a detailing business since 2005, and used car component since 2015.
Okay. Through the application here, and this is for Mr. Tremblay, the... Have you ever applied for license to repair motor vehicles? And it says no. And you say you were in Oxford now with another business?
Correct.
Why was that not added on to the application?
The repair part of the business?
Yes. Have you ever applied for license to repair motor vehicles? Did you repair motor vehicles in Oxford?
No, no, we didn't. We just...
Clean cars and sold cars? Okay. Does anybody else got anything else? Yes, Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question, follow-up on the parking. So the DCG has recommended no more than 20 cars. Does that include employee parking? Do... I assume there's a site plan approval somewhere?
Yeah, we do have a site plan approval, and that does include... It's 20 spaces... Yes, so it's 20 spaces for used car sales, and then there are four spaces for customers and employees. It's actually... I don't know why you guys don't have these, but we should... Yeah, it's actually 24 spaces, including the employee parking.
And you're familiar, because I know you've met with DCG, are you familiar with the four conditions? You mentioned one of them that they had put on, because I'll just read them into the record.
Oh, yes, yeah. No, they explained all that to us, and those are all agreeable.
Okay. Right, thanks.
Mr. Carpenter?
Can I just see the plan? If I may, you're using the existing building that's there, or?
Yes, the existing building, and it is set up. There would be no exterior changes, basically, to the site.
Has all the renovations, the oil separators, has all that work been completed as yet?
So the only thing we're doing to the building is putting an oil-water separator, which wasn't required for car sales, but will be for repair. I haven't done that yet, and I talked to Shannon Regan, and she had said, "Don't issue us..."
us the repair license once the plumbing inspector gives the okay that it's been installed. Actually, got it all lined up. It's going to be three weeks from today, if we get approved tonight.
Okay. All right. Now, with repairs, is there also going to be any painting done up there?
No, no bodywork.
There will be no bodywork, no painting whatsoever up there?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for this.
Anybody else want to take a look at the plans?
I think I have this there, but Shannon, not with it.
Yeah, we have a larger one, if that would help.
No, that's fine. I just want to take a look myself here to see exactly what the layout is. And all the area where those cars are going to be parked, for both employees, customers, and for whatever work you've got going up there for sales, it's all on pavement?
Correct.
There was no dirt parking lot up there? Okay.
If I may add one thing, the repair garage, it's basically a one-bay garage, and there's not going to be a huge volume of repairs.
Okay.
I don't know if you're familiar with the building, but it's, it's a kind of a nice little place, but it's not huge.
Okay.
There's not going to be a big generation of repair, you know, cars to be repaired. It's more to complement the, the sales than anything.
Okay. So you won't be taking deliveries of cars on trailers or anything? Most of it will be, you know, one-on-one independent, you know, cars coming in?
Yeah, mostly, yeah.
Okay. All right.
It's too busy to be having trailers in that area anyway, so.
Thank you. Okay, has anybody got anything else? Mrs. Brotherman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the licenses, provided that all the applicable requirements of the state and town, and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions, conditions, excuse me, shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with any conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license, and that the license will be the, be for the rest of the month of December 2016, and for the year of 2017. I, I can read the recommendations of the, of the DCG, if you feel as it's warranted.
We can put that into the record if you wish.
Put that in the record. The first recommendation from the DCG is that the applicant shall obtain all necessary permits and inspections from the town departments, boards, and commissions. The applicant shall install an oil-water separator for the auto repair bay prior to performing any auto repair services. The applicant must ensure that saleable inventory vehicle shall not exceed 20 vehicles, and must be parked on impervious surface within designated parking spaces, and that the applicant shall obtain any necessary approvals from the state agencies.
Okay. Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Have you got else, anything else to add tonight?
No, other than, thank you.
Being no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And we should close this hearing? So, make a motion or close the hearing?
I don't think it was a hearing.
No.
It wasn't a hearing.
There's no hearing. Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Very much, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no communications? We'll do the Convictula first. Okay. Next we have on the agenda, a Convictula license for Dip and Donuts at 913 Southbridge Street in Auburn. Is there anybody from that business here? Would you like to come up, please?
Okay. How are you guys?
Welcome. Can you state your name, or just tell us a little bit about what your plans are?
My name's Artur Maraca. I'm going to be the owner of the Dip and Donuts. It's, uh, used to be a honeydew donuts for about 20 years in the same location, so as far as changes, I'm not going to be changing anything, just, uh, they used to use frozen donuts, frozen Danish, all that stuff. We have a second location in Worcester, well, my parents' location. So they have a full kitchen, they make everything there, and basically just deliver everything in the one in Auburn, and coffee, all that stuff, the same.
Okay. It says, "A coffee shop with hand-cut donuts made fresh daily, and muffins, pastries, and bagels." What does, what tell me is that it's made fresh daily, that it's going to be done on premises? Are you willing to be doing any cooking, any baking whatsoever on premises?
No.
It's going to be all delivered in?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions from anybody else? You've had a chance to meet with the DCG?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Carpenter.
You're not making any changes to the building itself, because there was like a small spot that the original owner built that was not given an occupancy permit, on the backside of the building?
Yes, so I'm not going to touch that.
Okay.
Maybe storage, if anything, because cups and all the stuff that you're not going to use.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Anything else you want to add?
Nope.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town, and of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license, and that the license will be for the rest of the month of December 2016, and for the year 2017, with the conditions of the DCG. The applicant shall obtain all necessary permits and inspections from town departments, boards, and commissions, most notably the Board of Health. The applicant shall provide specifications of any new equipment to the Board of Health. The applicant shall ensure that any alarm and/or camera system must be operational before opening. The applicant shall work with the sewer department to ensure suitable grease traps are operational before opening.
Okay, second. So the motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. Happy holidays. Thank you. Okay. Next we have an update on the MSBA Accelerated Repair Programs, replacement of the Packard Dog School roof by school superintendent Marion Brunel and facilities director Joe Fahey. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We just wanted to provide you an update of where we stand. We recently just got notification that the reimbursement rate will be 54.16%, which is the same rate that we received for the roofs of Brenwood and Swanson Road, as well as the Boiler. We have a great team in place. It's with Hill International and CGKV Architects. We actually have a, a rough estimate right now for $620,000 for construction costs. MSBA will be paying the 54.16% of that, so saving the taxpayers of Auburn well over $300,000. Now, we're in line to go forward for the December 21st supplemental to MSBA. They'll take it up at their February 2017 board meeting, at which time it will become official, the approval process for us, and then we'll go out to bid right away. The, Mr. Fahey, his expertise and the team involved feel that going out in February will likely get us bids that could even be less than the projected amount of 620 foot construction. So, we just wanted to provide you an update. You've been supportive so far, and we will keep you posted. We don't need any signatures from you tonight, but just wanted you to know where we stood.
When is the plans to, once this program goes through and is accepted, when do you plan on starting the work?
As soon as school gets out.
As soon as school gets out, and that project will be done before school begins?
Correct. Be the summer of 2017.
Barring unforeseen. Okay. Anybody got anything else?
Good job, you guys have been working so well.
I want to thank Mr. Fahey, his expertise saves the taxpayers a lot of money, so I appreciate how he's had work.
We have a very good team here. It's, uh, we're very excited to work with them.
Great. We look forward to the updates and see where you're going, and we wish you a lot of luck with projects.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays. Thank you for coming in. Okay. Now, in front of us, we have the 2017 Annual License Renewals, and you should have a list of all those, and we also got a, three more tonight that were, came in today, that were added to the list, so we want to be sure we added all those. Has anybody got any questions regarding the license renewals? And take a look at that, we can renew these tonight, and then we can also have a motion or vote to any additional licenses that come in by December 31st that don't have any outstanding issues, we can vote those through, as we have done in the past.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, for the information of the board, at this point, we've received applications for all but two that we're waiting for, so what you have is nearly a complete package, with the two that are aware to get their information in, pending a conditional vote that we, we are providing with it. There are also just a few drain layer licenses that will need to be submitted as well.
Okay. And that will, those are not new drain layer licenses, they are?
Correct.
Okay. There we go. Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the license renewals, provided that all applicable requirements to the state and town, and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, with any conditions of the DCG to be placed upon the license.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Jacobson.
Through the board, if I may ask to do that, the board, while most of the applicants understand this, I think it would be good to just reiterate that these licenses are not transferable without a vote of the Board of Selectmen. So if any of the license holders would like to transfer the license, moving forward, they would have to come back to the board to have a vote for the transfer of the license. A license holder can't take it upon themselves to provide their license to another operator.
And they are aware of that?
Yeah, I, I thought it would be helpful if we raised that again publicly, and, you know, just for the board, maybe to make a, a statement, and we're certainly happy to include it on the license. I think it should be, it's always been in the policy, but I think the license should actually say, this license is non-transferable. So what the board's okay with that, we'll put it on the license, and just wanted to make a comment publicly, because a question had come up by one of the license holders.
I'll amend my motion to include the language that the town manager recommends.
Thank you.
And is that second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Excuse me. And now we'll take a conditional vote to approve any additional license renewal applications that come in by December 31st. These are motion.
I'll make a motion that we conditionally vote to approve any additional license renewal applicant, applications that come in by December 31st, 2016, and have no outstanding issues.
Second.
And motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. We have no proclamation in front of us tonight, and we come back to the Dog Park Committee appointment process. And this is, we had talked about this at our last meeting, about the appointment process, and we didn't have a full board. It was discussed that we should have a full board here to bring that back and discuss it, so, Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, I want to apologize to the committee, because I misread the charter, and Mrs. Goodrich, thank you for bringing that up, that actually the town manager has to appoint this committee. We can, and I spoke with her today, that we can deem it necessary, but the appointments need to be through the town manager, so that is entirely my error, and I apologize, so.
Okay. So, what is your wish then, to have the town manager make the appointments, and that would negate the motion that we, you had made about having, you know, the applicants come here for interviews?
Personally, I think we do need some transparency with this process. I think there, there is a lot of discomfort in the community as to how this process has kind of unfolded, and I don't say that to lay blame on anybody's door or criticize anybody, but I do think that it would be a positive step, and I think at the last meeting, Mrs. Ward did mention, we haven't asked the community in any meaningful sense, and we have not defined what this dog park would be. We don't know what kind of amenities the public may wish, or dog owners, the users of this park. So it would be good to have people come before the committee. The manager was gracious enough to say that she did not mind us doing interviews and making recommendations as to appointments, so that would be my request, and make this a joint project, which it has been all along, as far as, you know, we held the public hearing, but the staff did all the work, so.
Okay. Just on that note, you understand that we, there are, from what I understand, 23 applicants so far?
Yeah, through the chair, we, we received 24, and as the chair said, it is 23 now, because the requirement under the charter is that you be a registered voter, and one applicant was not a registered voter. So that's 23 applicants.
Okay. So, to finish my point, if we have 23 individuals that you, we are going to do an interview of here, we are going to be taking this probably sometime into March, maybe April, with the interviews, depending upon availability, and I don't know if, you know, we want to spend that kind of time and have this drag out that long. I'd rather expedite the process. Yeah, Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, in that, we have a modified process. I think that a subcommittee, as you recommended, might be good, as long as we can make sure that it's televised, and that we follow the board's policy that we adopted as far as the two questions, and that the other members have two questions, and I think that would be, you know, I think that would be the best way of doing it.
Okay. I guess, I'd have a hard time, I know that we have appointments made by the zoning board of appeals, the finance committee, and we have questions that we actually ask.
Yes.
What kind of questions are we going to ask for people who join a committee for a dog park? I mean, is it what background, or what experience? I don't know what to be asking. I guess I'm going to ask you for some insight.
I think it's any committee. We ask the same two questions, and then whoever else is on the subcommittee would, if they so choose, ask two more questions. What do you look for? I mean, what do, what does anybody look for? We want someone who's engaged, has the time to commit, and certainly has an interest in serving the community. I mean, most of our, the first two questions we ask are basically already asked on the application, but we have them basically asked in a public forum. So to me, I think it's whichever way the subcommittee wishes to use those two questions, that it should be germane to, you know, the subject matter.
Okay. Mr. Bertheum.
I, I'm the one that actually, I think, proposed the the motion, and my concern was that we get, and I'll stick to it, like, seven people, and I use the word appointed, and probably shouldn't have used the word appointed, but I'd like to see the seven people on the board. And my concern was for that board to go out, or committee to, to go out and do the research, and come back and present it to the selectmen, so they, I guess, eventually it's going to come back to the Board of Selectmen, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not fully convinced that, that we need to do the, the interviews. I think as long as we have people that have gone through the process of applying, and it looks like one wasn't eligible, and we get seven people, and I'd like to still see one from each precinct that we, we had talked about, so that it's kind of fair across the town, that we should just go ahead and let the town manager through lottery, however she feels the best, to get the seven-person committee going, and, and, you know, let, let's get some feedback. My, my main thing is, I don't think we have enough feedback, and the other thing is that I want to, I, I still think that before any decisions are made, there should be a public hearing day where everybody from town should have the opportunity to come in should have the opportunity to come in and speak. And those are the things that I'd like to see happen.
Would you, you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I will. Should I do that, and then we'll have discussion? Because I want to hear what other people thought as well.
Whichever way you want to go with that. I'll leave it open to the board if they want to discuss that, if they want to make a motion, whatever they want to do with this.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to form a committee of seven people. Do I, should I put "to be appointed by the town manager"? Or is that just an automatic?
Oh, they're to be by the town manager because the charter says that she will make those.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to form a committee of seven people consisting of one person, at least one person from each precinct, voting precinct, as well as a member of the parks, recreation, cemetery, and open space committee to have the opportunity to serve.
Okay. The motion been made. Sharon, have you got that?
Yes. I'll second it for discussion and a quick question.
Okay. So the motion been made and seconded. Is there discussion?
So I just want to be clear. So parks, cemetery, recreation are one committee, and then open space is a second? Okay, just kind of ran together. So the parks, recreation?
Parks, recreation, cemetery is one.
Cemetery is one, and then the open space?
And space is another.
So it'll be a seven, still the original seven member? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carpenter.
I just want to be clear. I was at the last open space. They don't currently have anyone who's able to serve, so I wouldn't want a seat held for them because currently, they don't have anyone available to serve.
Okay.
But they...
Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, to follow up on that, I was going to mention that we went through the list just to verify there were no applicants from either the open space and recreation committee or from the parks, brick and cemetery committee. So of the 24 that came in, none of them were members of either committee. And I know the board had taken a vote. And Mr. Berthium's motion now is to allow a member to serve if they so choose. And just wanted to let the board know we didn't receive any applicants from either of those committees.
Okay. Mr. Berthium.
Through the chair, what would be, what would be your concerns if we didn't have anyone from those committees on that search committee?
I think it's helpful to have them. That was the discussion that the board had. But on the other hand, this is a volunteer committee, so we can't force someone from one of those committees to participate. Likewise, it's similar to the master plan committee and the bylaw review committee. We try to get representation from all of the regulatory boards and commissions because it makes for a better discussion about a master plan. You can't always get volunteers that have that kind of time. So we understand that. I think it's fine to leave your vote the way it is because should the committee get constituted, and maybe at some point, somebody drops off, and you have an opening, and somebody from one of those committees would like to be on it, there's still the opportunity to do it. But I don't think we can actually, I know we can't force anyone to select a representative to participate. As Mr. Carpenter said, the open space committee has struggled having representation on some other committees in town as well.
So I'm going to withdraw my motion and then give a new motion. When I give the new motion, so that we're not doing this over and over again. Should I also put in my motion the concern that I have to have a public hearing? Or is that going to be an automatic after the fact anyway?
Through the chair, that's up to the board. If the board wants that to be part of the mission of the committee, you could take a vote on that. It could be done separately. I think right now, you might want to do two votes. This is a vote to how to constitute the committee and how you're going to appoint it. And then maybe a separate vote, if you so choose, to have the committee, once it is formed, to include a public hearing at some point. If that's, I don't want to put words in your mouth on what the motion would be, but I would separate the motions and keep a motion regarding the constitution, putting the committee together separate.
Okay. Before we address that, I know we have some members of the public who'd like to speak. I want to hear from the board first, and then we'll have a give you a chance to speak before we vote. Mr. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on yours. So I think we could make that part of the charges to, to appoint, you know, have the appointed committee hold a public hearing within a certain timeframe of their formation to hear public comment before they deliberate on any, you know, or take any votes. Because certainly, you want them to take public input before they take any votes on anything. So we could make, you know, we could ask the town manager to make that holding, you know, have the committee hold a public hearing prior to taking any votes that they hear from the public first. It could be in their charge, correct? Could we make it part of the charge?
Through the chair, the committee is an advisory committee. So I know the board had discussed when it was first put on the agenda a couple of weeks ago, and I believe at the last meeting, that you wanted this committee to do a lot of outreach into the community and get some feedback. So that could certainly be part of the charge. I would also ask through the chair, when you do take the vote on constituting the committee, to just be clear, so I'm aware too, whether the board's going to be doing either a lottery or an interview process and recommending, just give me the names, and I'll just fill out the appointment slips for, if you're asking me to do that. I just want to be clear on what the process is.
I think that's one of the things we're going to get to tonight because I think we tried to discuss that last week. And Mr. Berthium is here with us tonight, too, so we have a full board.
Right. And through the chair, as I said, I did have a conversation with Mr. Carpenter. If the board wants to make, go through the process, you know, I'm fine. Just give me the recommendations of the names that you want to have.
Mr. Carpenter.
Just every meeting that these guys have is a public meeting. So we don't want people to wait. I've been through one master plan process. I don't want people to think that they have to wait for a specific hearing. Anytime the meeting or this group, it's a publicly posted meeting. And it's up to that committee whether and how they're going to take input. But don't wait till the end. You know, you want to get in at the beginning and express your interests and whatever issues you have. So even if we do have the larger meeting, whether here or through that committee, please be a part of the process from the beginning because it's very difficult to write a plan and deliver what people want if we don't have input. So if you have an interest, even if you're not on the committee, you're always welcome to come to meetings and give your input.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Goodrich.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So just to follow up on Mr. Berthium's comments, you know, again, I wasn't here the night you made the original motion, so I'm much more clear now. And I think having the town manager make these appointments by lottery, I mean, we have 23 now, 23 good applicants. Who do you say, you know, well, they all want to serve on the park? You know, is it the first five that happened to come in for an interview? Is it, you know, if we were to do it, is it the first person that makes a motion? I think a lottery certainly is fair, especially if it's done in a public way that people can see that everyone's names went in and everyone's name came out. So, I mean, just the fact that we have 23 people willing to serve on the committee is wonderful. We have other committees that we're looking for people to serve on the committees. So I think it's great. But I don't, you know, want to say, "Well, you deserve to serve more than you do with 23 names." I like the idea of lottery.
Mr. Berthium.
Before we hear from the public, should I withdraw my original motion and then give a new motion?
If you so choose.
I think we have a motion on the floor.
What is the motion now, Sharon?
Well, I thought Mr. Berthium withdrew the motion.
I haven't yet.
Okay, so that has been withdrawn. So if you want to make a new motion, then you're allowed to do that.
So it has been withdrawn and seconded?
Yeah. Okay, good. Okay. Mr. Berthium.
I will make a motion that the town manager form a committee of seven people to review potential locations and conduct a cost analysis for a dog park with at least one member of each precinct. And that committee would be formed by a lottery of the applications in a public manner.
Through the chair, before, I just want to clarify one thing.
I just want a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry. I want to clarify because the question had come up before about any applicants that abut town-owned property and whether there's a conflict of interest with those abutters that are abutting any town-owned property. So I don't know how the board's position is on that. Under conflict of interest laws, those, if those names were chosen by lottery and there came time to make any kind of recommendation, they would have to recuse if they weren't abutter to the town-owned property.
Okay.
So I raised that for the board to consider. The question has come up.
Okay. All right. The motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the board?
Just under discussion, I think, before we vote.
Okay. I guess we have some individuals. Would you come up and identify yourself, please?
My name is Susan Ward. I live at 129 Packard Chug Street. And I am an abutter to the proposed, one of the proposed sites for the dog park. My question to you is about forming this committee and the point of doing it. Because I have a copy of the Inventory of Town-owned Conservation and Recreational Land. We printed this in October of this year. Then we printed another one on 12-2 of this year. All perpetuities have been taken off all properties. Funding sources have been taken off. There are no funding sources for any property. And I know that Packard Chug Golf Course was funded. So those are, those are wrong. There are 23 properties that were listed in perpetuity in October that now say "none." There are the same 142 properties for funding sources, and some of them were blank. And those that I looked at did have funding. Now they all say "none." But the one that really gets me as far as you're doing this committee is under, let's see, recreational potential? How many sites were you going to look at? Still the 12? Well, it's narrowed down to four, according to this list. And out of the four, ours, Packard Chug Golf Course distinctly says "dog park." Lemansky Field and Mary D. Stone School have "dog park" next to them. But I have been told that Lemansky is run by or approved by school committee, and that they won't. Mary D. Stone School, right here, I was told that that has been designated as a playground. So out of the four, two of them are already off the list. And the other one is a little tot lot that isn't even big enough. And it's abutted just like we are. So what does that leave? Packard Chug Golf Course. That's it. So what's the point of forming this committee?
Okay. Ms. Jacobson, please.
Through the chair, I know Ms. Lancia spoke to our town planner, who did explain everything today. But for the public, I'll explain as well. The open space plan was initially, several years ago, put together by the CMRPC. And at that time, anything, several years ago, anything that was listed as under the control, there was no ownership, but under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission by the CMRPC, was put under as in perpetuity. When the plan was updated in 2014, that carried forward by CMRPC and the committee that was looking at it at the time. It was submitted to the state in draft form, received conditional approval with a number of changes that had to be made. So as you all know, we reconstituted the Open Space and Recreation Committee. They took the entire plan, the open space plan, back and spent several months, if not even over a year, looking at all the different charts and graphs and sections of it per the recommendation of the state. The plan was submitted as revised in June of this year, and we received approvals in July of this year. At the time that that plan was submitted, my understanding is, and I know our town planner's here, that my understanding is from the Open Space Committee that they did talk about potential sites for dog parks. And ultimately, as you know, we came in and looked at 12. At the time that this was going through the process, which I believe would have been late spring, we were early in the process, and they were only looking at four sites. We expanded that to ultimately 12. So when the plan was actually drafted and sent to the state, we hadn't even come up with our final decisions yet. So the plan was sent to the state and approved in July. And I know the town planner, when Ms. Lancia provided a letter to the board, and it mentioned that the open space plan, said it was in perpetuity. I talked to the town planner because that wasn't the plan that I recall seeing. And he explained that the former 2014 plan had been sent to be posted as opposed to the one that was actually approved by the state and sent. So that plan was reposted with the approved plan from the state. All of the, all of the sections where it said "in perpetuity" are removed unless there's a specific CR, a conservation restriction, vote for it. It wouldn't be in perpetuity. Like, the schools are not in perpetuity. Those schools are town properties. They're not in perpetuity to always remain schools, which is why we're, are p-ing it. But at the time, there were actually four sites that must have been being looked at. And the Open Space Committee did talk about dog parks. The town administration, we expanded it. So I will repeat it because it's been questioned several times. I want to repeat it and make sure everyone's clear. This is probably the third or fourth meeting I've said it at. The town administration is not recommending the Packard Chug Golf Course 12 Upland Street site. We are not recommending it. Back in June, we were looking at it, and that's when that plan was submitted to the state. I think it might have been around June 20th. Regarding the funding sources, unless the committee can go back and check the Open Space and Recreation Committee that's putting together this plan with the town planner, unless they can go back and check every town meeting vote for the last 40 years, you have to look at the deeds. The deeds reflect whether there's a funding source or not. The town meeting votes would specify what that funding source is. The deeds do not. The deed, if there is any kind of restriction, the deed would say that. The deed doesn't say what the funding source is. That is a town meeting vote that identifies the funding source. So the committee, it's beyond the scope of the committee to do that type of work. My concern is that the state requires, or put that column in there, and it was left blank because, short of going through those votes, I don't believe the committee has the ability to get that information.
Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a procedural issue. Because I know I brought this up at the last meeting as having a formal vote. And I, and I think that this would be a good idea to make people less nervous about what this committee is going to do. Would it be appropriate to put in the motion that the Upland Street site is not to be considered? So that would be through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town manager, just so that we can put this subject to rest, or at least this site to rest.
I believe that site has been put to rest. If we can make a motion to solidify that, that's great. I'm going to leave it up to the board to do that. But we do have a motion on the floor right now regarding that. So if you want to amend that, we'd have to make a motion to amend. And what was the original motion, Sharon?
Move that the town manager forms a committee of seven people to review potential locations and conduct a cost analysis of a dog, for a dog park. At least one member of each precinct committee to be formed by lottery of applications in a public manner.
Okay. And that was made by Mr. Berthium and seconded by Mrs. Goodrich. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would just ask through you to Mr. Berthium if he would be willing to amend his motion to include that language, so that it's clear.
Mr. Berthium.
So I'll amend the motion to include that the, is it 12 Upland?
12 Upland Street.
That the land at 12 Upland will not be considered for a future dog park.
And Mrs. Goodrich, if you're...
So I have, procedurally, I'd rather, because we're forming a committee, I will support, if this is what the board wishes to, because I've said it, already said it, eliminate the Packard Chug site. I would prefer a motion that appoints a committee and then a motion that directs the committee not to consider the Upland Street site. Procedurally, like, there are motions that just don't go together. We're forming a committee. And then if the board wishes to take further action and instruct the committee not to consider the Upland Street site, that's reasonable. But I don't think the two go together in the same motion. And I will support it.
That's what I asked.
All right, that's great. So we won't make that amendment until it's seconded. It'll be, okay, so that'll be the original motion and seconded. And we still have to... So, that'll be the original motion and seconded, and we still have to vote on that, and then we can take up that second item. And anybody else got anything right now? Mrs. Ward.
Brought up the deed. I would like to clarify something for myself and for the people of the Town of Auburn. Town Council, well, never mind that portion.
Mrs. Ward.
Yes.
We're going to take that up, another item here on the agenda tonight. We're still talking about the process of the committee.
So, I can't address that the deed does not reflect conservation and historic, because town managers stated that it doesn't say, which it doesn't?
We are not speaking on the deed tonight.
So, even though she brought it up, I can't speak on that?
No, we're not. You will get a chance to speak on that when the agenda item comes up, the town manager's items. Then you can speak on the deed. We are talking on the policy right now for putting a committee together for the appointment of committee.
All right.
Okay? You will have your chance. Is there anything further? Okay. So, the motion's been made and seconded. And anybody want to hear the motion again before you vote on it? Okay. Being none, no more further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Now, if you care to address the Upland Street site?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the board direct the town manager to the committee that she's about to form, that they not consider 12 Upland Street as a site for a dog park.
Second.
So, the motion been made and seconded to eliminate 12 Upland Street for a dog park. Is there any further discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Okay. Do you?
Through the chair, yeah. I was just trying to figure, did the board take a vote to ask the committee to hold a public hearing? Did we decide to divide that vote out as well? In which case, I don't think that there was a vote.
Well, I did not include it. Mrs. Goodrich.
I think Mr. Carpenter's comments about it, being a public hearing anyway, it'll be up to the committee to encourage the public and public participation.
Okay. Thank you. Just want to clarify.
And I think any public hearing later on will be after some discussions made, they make a recommendation, and we can have a hearing on that at that time, and we can hear from...
Just before we leave this subject, I would also like to make a motion. I don't think it's necessary, because I think it's self-explanatory. We're asking for an investigation. But I would like to make a motion that we direct the town manager to, through the town manager, to the committee, if that's appropriate, that the sites that were considered by town staff are not limiting on this committee. They can look anywhere in town for a suitable location. So, I just want to make that clear, so that the committee has a clear directive that we are investigating this, and we want to find a suitable site. We are not limiting it to the sites that have already been reviewed by town staff. So, that would be my motion, sir.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there any discussion on that? Ms. Jacobson, have you anything on that?
Through the chair, no, I agree. I think we should look at every possible site.
All right. The motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Goodrich.
If anyone has any land up there that they want to donate to the town, it's a perfect spot for the dog park. Well, thank you.
So, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Okay. Now, we have the town manager items. This is the response from town council regarding the deed issue for 12 and 15 Upland Street in Auburn, Packagawood Hill. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair. On the request of the board, as well as on the request of the chairman of the Conservation Commission, I forwarded both an email from Ms. Laurie Lancia, sent to Michael Garland, Chair of the Conservation Commission, in addition to a package that was sent to the board members from Ms. Lancia to the Board of Selectmen. All of that, I was asked to send to town council to research it and provide an opinion. And the letter that you have in your packets this evening is town council's response, and I just want to clarify, this is the response from town council. This is not my response. This response was addressed to me to transfer to the board, as well as to the Conservation Commission chairman, for their request to get this information. So, I'm happy to read this.
Would you please? Just please.
The letter is dated December 6, 2016, regarding the deed issue at 12 and 15 Upland Street, Auburn, Mass. Dear Ms. Jacobson, references made to the email from Conservation Commission Chairman Michael W. Garland dated November 9, 2016, regarding an email he received from Ms. Laurie Lancia of 16 Ward Street in Auburn, our telephone conference on Thursday, November 18, 2016, and your fax of November 21, 2016, forwarding a copy of a letter from Ms. Lancia to the Board of Selectmen, all regarding the status of certain land at 12 and 15 Upland Street in Town of Auburn, and quotes "the property." You have asked this office to review, comment, and advise us of the content of Ms. Lancia's communications relative to the property. Ms. Lancia, in her letter to the Board of Selectmen, seeks to have this office prepare and file a corrective deed relative to the property, so as to have the grantee of such corrective deed now read, quote, "Town of Auburn dash Conservation and Historical Commission for conservation and historic purposes," end of quote. Ms. Lancia is of the belief that filing such a corrective deed would be consistent with the vote of the special town meeting in February 1980 relative to Article IV. Article IV of the February 1918 special town meeting authorized, underlined, the town to appropriate a sum of money for the purchase of the property. There is nothing in the vote that states that the property was to be deeded to the Town of Auburn dash Conservation Commission and Historical Commission for conservation and historic purposes, end of quote. Filing a corrective deed to change the grantee, from which that was expressly set forth in town meeting vote, would therefore be inconsistent with the vote of town meeting. Additionally, it should be noted that the vote is silent as to requiring any formal recreational or conservation covenants and/or restrictions as part of the town's acceptance of the deed. In my opinion, no evidence of mistake exists in this case in granting the property to the Town of Auburn, a municipal corporation. The Packagawood Golf Corporation deeded the property and other property to, quote, "The Town of Auburn, a municipal corporation," end of quote, consistent with the special town meeting vote, which authorized the town to appropriate a sum of money to acquire the property. The town meeting vote administratively placed the property under the joint control of the Conservation Commission and Historic Commission for reasons determined necessary at that time, does not alter or change the intended grantee. Therefore, in my opinion, the deed is correct as filed. Signed, very truly yours, Robert J. Henigan, here in the Town Council. And again, a copy that is available in your packet, a copy, was provided to Ms. Lancia, who picked it up.
Okay. Is she all ready?
Excuse me.
Okay.
I don't know who she is.
So, we have gotten this letter in front of us, and it is the interpretation of our town council that the deed is as drafted. And Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed, because Mrs. Goodrich isn't here, we would like to make a motion that we take a brief recess, so that we give her time to deal with whatever matter she's dealing with.
Motion to recess for five minutes?
Sure.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're in recess for five minutes. We are back. The town manager wrote the, read the letter from the interpretation from our town council, Bob Henigan. Now, this is not a hearing. It's a public meeting. I will entertain some comments. The comments will be, we will hear the comments. This will not be debated tonight, because we do have council's interpretation. That's what we are going to go with. And you can make your comments, and not to be derogatory towards the board, towards the public, towards any individual. So, that being said, have any board members got anything right now? Mr. Carpenter.
I just have a quick question. I know council is, has made the opinion that the deed doesn't need to be corrected, but is there any barrier if present-day individuals want to place a restriction or amend this deed? Is that possible? And if so, how would they go about doing it?
Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair. We can verify with town council what that process would be. I'm going to assume it would have to go to town meeting for a vote. It may also have to go to the Conservation Commission for a vote. I'm not sure about that. So, we'll double-check. But that's not something, you know, would have to be, I believe, would have to be a petition, would have to get a full town meeting vote. The question that came up is whether a vote can be changed 36 years after it was taken from a legal perspective. Under the statewide, on the charter, there's what, 10 days to vote a rescission or an amendment to a vote once it's filed? That passed 36 years ago. So, I don't, I'm not an attorney, and we'll check with the attorney. I don't know that it can be changed, given the fact the vote was taken in 1980.
Is that something the board wants to have checked into? We do have a policy that if we, you know, if the board agrees, that we go to town council and ask these questions. So, I want to hear from the board. If there's a motion, we'll ask the town manager to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we ask town council to investigate if, at this point in time, members of the community would like to amend this deed, if that is possible, and what the process is that they would need to follow.
Through the chair, can I just ask for clarification? Amend the deed to reflect what specifically? Because the town council did make it clear that the grantee cannot be changed. The grantor would have to be present to change the grantee.
Okay. It would be to amend it to place a further restriction upon it? Would that be possible?
Okay. So, the question is to check with town council as to whether a restriction can be placed on the deed, not changing the grantor on the deed.
Yes. No.
So, the motion been made to approach town council to receive that information. Is there a second?
A second if a discussion.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich.
Could I just hand the motion back, please?
Motion to ask town council to investigate if community members want to amend a deed to place a restriction on it, and what would be the process?
Can it be done, and what would the process be?
It is possible, and what would be the process?
I just, you know, I think it's got a lot of language. I just think, ask town council to give an opinion on the process for amending a current deed, putting, sorry, for putting a deed restriction on public land, the process for a, I don't want to say resident either, because we don't know how it's going to come forward. If you say resident, the residents may approach the Conservation Commission and ask them to file a warrant article. So, I think we just need to find out what the process is for amending a deed to include a deed restriction on private, on public property.
Okay. Is that understood? Is that...
That's fine by me. We can keep it general.
I just, if you limit it to a...
I understand your point.
That's why I had you read it back, a resident. You're restricting to who can move forward. If, you know, like I said, if conservation is approached and asked, can you, can you put an amendment, I mean, a warrant article on the warrant for town meeting, then that would be sponsored by the town meeting. It wouldn't be sponsored by a private resident. I just think we just want to, if the board wishes to, find out what the process is for amending a deed, for a deed restriction on public land.
So, withdraw my first motion, and put in its place, if Sharon has it, which I'm sure she does, exactly what Doreen said the first time.
We'll wait for Sharon to get that together, and then we'll hear it back.
Motion to ask town council if it's possible to amend a deed on public property to place a deed restriction on it, and what the process would be.
It's fine. If you're happy with that, and I'm happy with that.
Okay. So, any further discussion? Okay. Mrs. Lancia.
First of all, Laurie Lancia, 16 Ward Street. I realize that this isn't a debate. This is just a simple conversation. Mr. Henigan did not completely read Article IV, because it continues with "purchase to be made only if there is a 50% reimbursement by the Bureau of Heritage Conservation and Recreation Service and the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund. Said land will be placed under joint control of the Conservation and Historic Commissions." Voted unanimously in favor. So, there's your town meeting vote. It's right in black and white. Ron Proudie followed it up with, "Dreams of many were realized in 1980 as the town completed details for the purchase of Packagawood Golf Course. This desirable open area is now set aside in perpetuity. It is our further belief that this action will ensure the preservation of this site for all time, both for significant recreation and open space, and as a major historic landmark." This is all on the letter that I sent to each one of you with the information packet. The corrective deed will keep what town meeting voted in sync. It all goes together. Town meeting voted for conservation and the historic commissions. The Gilbert Stockwell property, which the deed was filed May 7, 1980, it reads "Town of Auburn dash Conservation Commission for conservation purposes." That's the way it was recorded. Maybe it was an oversight from Packagawood Golf Course. Maybe they were too excited about it. I don't know. But the 61.9 acres of Packagawood Golf Course is listed with the Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is the fund that gave the matching grant. It's also on the National Historic Landmarks Program through the National Park Service. It's a historic area. Not only is it just a golf course from 1960 for the people of the community, but Robert Gartard started there, and it was the whole area. It wasn't just where the concrete thing is. I don't understand why this has to be such an ongoing, difficult thing. It's all in black and white. If you need more documentation, I have about a foot and a half more paperwork to prove all of this. The corrective deed, it's just simply changing Auburn, Town of Auburn, and including Conservation and Historic Commissions for conservation and historic purposes. And that will stop any possibility of anything ever being done to that land. The intent was to preserve it. It's the town's job to protect it and preserve it, the way town meeting voted for it in 1980. And I hope that you'll finally understand that it's just a simple filing. It doesn't need to keep continuing. I don't want to have to file a lawsuit, but if that's what it's going to take for you people to understand that this is, this is our community, this is our town, and if you don't protect this, we may not have a dog park, and I appreciate Dan making that motion, but what if we have a restaurant? What if we have a housing project? We want this land protected the way it was intended to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Ward.
I would like to clarify something for myself and for the people of the Town of Auburn. Town council has recommended that you, the selectmen, not amend the deed for the purchase of Packagawood Golf Course, all 61.9 acres of it. An amendment to this deed would put control of the land into the hands of the Conservation and Historic Committees jointly, right where control was agreed upon at the time of purchase, according to the town minutes.
Excuse me, Mrs. Ward. Which document you reading from?
From the town minutes of 1980.
Town meeting minutes.
The town meeting minutes.
Town meeting minutes, okay.
As the deed is now written, whether by an oversight or by a mistake by town council, the deed simply says "Town of Auburn," without specifying the committees in control, Conservation and Historic Committees, which, by default, puts the control of Packagawood Golf Course into your hands, the selectmen, which it was voted against in those same minutes.
May I correct you? That wouldn't be coming back to the board of selectmen, it comes back to the town manager through the charter of 2009.
And why is that?
Because that's how the charter was voted, that the, all the...
So, the charter goes all the way back to a deed that was, a deal that was made by a man who sold this property to the Town of Auburn?
Historical and Conservation Commissions were the ones that were in, taking part, and took place in that vote at the town meeting. When the charter changed, all of that restrict, all those responsibility of all the lands of the town goes back to the town... of the town goes back to the town manager.
So Julie's in charge of all of it?
Yes, she is.
Through the chair, if I can just correct. It's the town manager. It's the position, not the person.
Well, you are the town manager. I'm sorry.
I just want to make it clear, though, it's under, there are two different issues here, and I know we're not debating this, but I just want to be clear, and I, I don't believe we should have any further conversation on this without having town council here. I don't want to speak for him, but I will clarify.
So you're telling me to be quiet?
Excuse me. What we're looking for is, we're not able to change the grantee, because the grantor would have to be here to change the grantee.
He is dead.
Grantee was the Town of Auburn. The vote also, as town council did say in his letter, was to place the property under joint control of Concom and Historic Commission. Joint control is not the grantee. The grantee was specified in the vote as the Town of Auburn. And town council did read the entire article. I just want to assure you. So I don't think that we should be debating the legal aspects of his letter. This is his opinion. He's provided his opinion. It was specific to changing the deed to a different grantee, and that's what the issue is. Issue of control or property is a completely separate issue. That wasn't one that was raised. This is who is actually the owner of the property.
And I would agree with you.
And the owner of the property is the Town of Auburn.
We are not going to debate this issue tonight.
So you're going to tell us once again to shut up?
No.
You have told us to shut up from the day you started all of this with the dog park.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Ward, I think you're out of line with that. I think what we've discussed tonight here is we're talking about the deed and any restrictions...
I am talking about the deed, and you won't let me finish.
I understand that, but we have had a...
I let her finish.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Control of this land is now in your hands only by default, because a mistake was made by town council, the same town council who is now recommending that you do not amend this deed, thereby correcting his mistake or oversight. And I stand by the minutes of those meetings, and they should be a binding agreement. My father-in-law worked really hard to get this land for the people of Auburn in perpetuity, which is taken off of all, off of that list. There is no more perpetuity on any land, and I hope all the people who think that their land is in perpetuity will take a look at that, because they're not secure either.
Thank you.
And through the chair, if I can just add, just for anyone, just so you know, it is not, we can't go by minutes. We can't go by town reports. We can't go by comments that were made from thirty-six years ago. It's been made clear to us by town council that you can only go by the, by the deed. The deed is the legal instrument. So that is what we're working at, is the deed. None of us here were, were part of that conversation thirty-six years ago. We have a legal instrument, which is the deed, which is what town council is reviewing. The intent, none of us could or should speak to the intent. It is what is the actual vote. And the vote is not, it is not from minutes. It is from the actual vote that was taken at town meeting, which was provided by the Corps Office, and it was a certified vote.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else? Would you come forward and identify yourself?
My name is Melissa McDonald of Sixth Ward Street. I am appalled that this is going on too long. A lot of people, you included, have put a lot of time and energy into this. The butters of Twelve and Fifteen Upland Street are here not to protest or antagonize. We are here to voice our desire to be heard, to protect historic national landmarks. Such people as NASA now are aware of what's going on, okay? Robert Goddard is a valid member of this, history of this town. Not only was the golf course, the Effie Ward Farm, the site of his first launch, but he had multiple other attempts, which may consist of, and probably do, once I talked to Clark University and WPI, where his archives are stored, other launches have occurred on other pieces of the land. I would hope that the town people understand the value of history that could potentially be lost to any type of building, park, recreation, whatever. It is the purpose of the deed to abide by what was originally set in stone, whether it be verbal or in writing, by a man who generously worked and toiled the land, through time, gave it to, offered to the Town of Auburn, was partially federally funded. So therefore, the U.S. government now has a stake in what's going to be done with this land, because it was originally bought with federal money. I think we need to all listen to each other and not be argumentative, and really just get this taken care of. Auburn is a very small mark on the dot compared to a lot of other places that have dog parks. There are a lot of other parcels of land that are open, and I, for one, and all of my lovely neighbors, are willing to protect this land, and we're asking the Board and all future committee members to understand the historical significance of this land and the beauty of it, to remain open without gates, without barking dogs, without buildings, skate parks, et cetera. I invite you to come to my home, each and every one of you, as well as anybody in the audience, walk through the whole golf course, Twelve and Fifteen Upland Street, and see the beauty of that nature, and what Mr. Ward wanted it to remain. And I'm just asking you, and I know some of you personally, to open up your hearts and minds to what is being said in that original deed. Thank you very much.
Mr. Page.
I wasn't coming up here tonight to speak on this, but, you know, there seems a lot of misconception with the town manager and the Board of Selectmen to our residents. We need to help and protect them every way we can. If there's a restriction deed that there's a problem with, that there was a mistake made, and we're having town council, who is getting paid with the residents' taxes, is coming back with stuff like this, is this some kind of conspiracy going on?
I'm sorry, that's out of line, Mr. Page.
You know what, Mr. Holson? I'll take that as out of line, and I will not speak on it again. But, you know, seeing things be going away from our residents in this town, we need to take care of them and be the backbone. That's what your jobs are, that's what you get voted in to do, as well as I do on the school committee. We need to protect the people, and when an issue comes up like this, you don't do everything before the fact, and then decide you're going to put it here and not dealing with the residents. You need to put more time and effort to the residents' questions and ideas. Nothing has to be done behind closed doors. It's going to be brought out in front and give it to the people that keep this town running. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. We, now, have we got any open motions right now? I know we've had a lot of discussion from, I beg your pardon?
I don't think you voted on the motion that Dan made.
Okay. So the motion we have in place, one second. The motion we have in place is to have town council review this. Is there any further discussion? You want to speak on this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Please. Identify yourself.
Hi. My name is Christian Klowke. I live part-time at Twenty eighth Ward Street in Norman, and part-time at Two Sixteen, Sixteen Bank Street in Cambridge, Mass. I just have a, just a quick clarification comment regarding the question of town council. So from what I understand, there's been a motion to have town council comment on whether the deed could be amended to say, you know, partially Historical Committee and the Conservation Committee. But from what I'm just understanding now, what I think Ms. Jacobson said, if I didn't misinterpret, even if we had that language in there, by the new Charter of the Town of two thousand and nine, it would still go, the decision would still be made by the manager. Having that language in the deed, that restriction, wouldn't actually change functionally what happened to the land. Is that correct? Because now the town manager is the one that actually supersedes that role as two thousand and nine. Is that correct?
Through the chair, if I may. Yes, that is correct, but I believe the motion is to look to see if any restrictions can be placed on the deed, which would be something like a conservation restriction that would supersede any care, custody, and control of any position. So a conservation restriction is something that is specifically voted, has to go on a deed, and remains on it per the vote of, I believe it would be town meeting.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Thank you.
Through the chair, and if I also just may clarify, because a comment was made, I just want to be pretty clear here. Town council, current town council, Robert Henigan, was not town council in nineteen eighty. He has not been town council for thirty-six years. He's... I'm sorry, I'm talking to the chair, so I'm trying to look at him. Town council was not, town council now is Robert Henigan. He was not town council in nineteen eighty. That was thirty-six years ago. There was a different town council. I just want to be clear on that, because it was commented that it's the same town council who made a mistake and is trying to correct it. That is, that is not true. It is a different town council. So Robert Henigan has been town council for many years, but not thirty-six years, just for the record. Thank you.
Okay. So the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Now we have an update on municipal aggregation.
Through the ch, sorry. Through the, I don't know, I'm trying to find my mic tonight. I'm sorry. Is that better? Can you hear? Through the chair, just notification that for those of you who were participants in the town's municipal aggregation program, which, again, that started about a year ago in December of fifteen, you're automatically in the program unless you choose to opt out. The Colonial Power, which is our municipal aggregation consultant and town administration, we went out for quotes and bids back in September to get a rate that would start this December. We looked at twelve-month, eighteen-month, and twenty-four rates. The best rate at the time was the twelve-month rate. The rates have definitely inched up a speck since a year ago, but they're still below the basic rate of national grid. So we locked in a rate of zero point nine four two four, and that is for a hundred percent renewable or green rate. It is slightly below the national grid basic rate, again, but the national grid basic rate changes winter, spring. This would be for one year. So people will see their bills in January. This becomes effective as of the reading, the meter reading in December, and we've received one call from a gentleman who got his bill, and it didn't show the new rate. And the reason was, the new rate takes effect as of the December reading, you get billed for it in January. So just want to let people know, they'll start to see the rate change, which I believe is fractions of a hundredth of pennies from last year, and yet still below the national grid basic rate. And that takes place in this month, and it will go for a one-year contract through December of two thousand and seventeen. So we're very happy that we were able to get it. The supplier is still Constellation, and all the notifications and public notices were put up on our website when we first found out that this was going forward, but I wanted to bring it up tonight, because the bill actually, again, it will be reflected in your January bill. So just want to clarify anything. If anyone has any questions, they're welcome to call our office. Matt Benoit, who's our town planner, and also taking over our energy manager functions, and they can also call Colonial Power. All the numbers are on the town's website if they need any information. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have draft free cash policy, and I'll turn that over to Mr. Casanova.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, if you recall, we brought this to you on November twenty-eighth. Two days later, we brought it to the Finance Committee for their review and consideration. This is a slightly amended free cash policy. We did carve out some of the references made on the footnote part of this that was originally incorporated in the body of the draft policy. It makes reference to how that is calculated, and we also put in, "Any use of free cash would require a vote of town meeting." It is an appropriation, so I think there were some members on, on this committee, as well as the Finance Committee, who wanted to see that as a footnote as well. So it's basically the same policy that was brought to you several weeks ago, so we're just here to answer any questions as a result of your review of the policy. I know we have talked to a few members regarding some of the, some of the language in the body of the draft, and I hope we answer those questions for you in preparation for your consideration tonight.
Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, I did speak with the manager and the town accountant, CFO, about potentially, and they seemed, they considered it and thought it might be a good idea to restrict the remaining fifty percent by, and I'll need help with the motion, but it would direct a percentage, and I would ask that they make a recommendation rather than we suggest a standard percentage for OPEB and stabilization, so that this would be, so of that fifty percent available, whatever that percentage, that recommendation that the manager and the CFO would return to us would be an annual thing if it qualified under the policy, so that it would feed into that. That's in addition to whatever we may put in. It is not intended to replace it.
Through the chair, I'll turn to the CFO as well, but we did have a conversation with Mr. Carpenter, and we feel that's a very reasonable request to make, to focus some of those funds of the fifty percent of available free cash, and then to take a portion of the fifty percent of available free cash and put it toward OPEB and stabilization. Those are, you know, OPEB being an unfunded liability that we need to focus on, and stabilization giving us the opportunity, with the town meeting vote, to go back in and use those funds for any other one-time expenditure that may be needed. So it fits with what the concept is. Mr. Casanova can talk a little bit about the, the recommendation that we had in response for what kind of level that we'd like to see, and maybe give an example of what kind of money that would mean going into those funds.
So after some lengthy discussion, I think we're prepared to make a recommendation as follows. So I want to use the example of our net gain from fifteen to sixteen, and how we closed out the year, to give you an example of how this is going to work. So under this policy, we had roughly a net gain of two million dollars from FY fifteen, FY sixteen. Under this policy, fifty percent of the two million, or one million, would remain free cash. The other fifty percent would apply to the uses specified under this draft policy. That being said, if we took the remaining fifty percent, or one million, twenty percent of that would go into OPEB, or two hundred thousand dollars. Twenty percent of that, an additional twenty percent would go into stabilization, or two hundred thousand dollars, leaving a balance of six hundred thousand dollars to be used for any other purpose that we may have identified in this policy. That could be OPEB, stabilization, capital improvement trust, outright capital purchases, a conservation trust if town meeting should adopt such a, a vote, facility improvements, or for any other one-time, non-operational expense. So a one-time operational expense could be for a land purchase, it could be for a hazmat remediation situation that was unforeseen or unexpected, but it's non-operational in nature. It cannot be used for a reoccurring annual operational expense. That defeats the purpose. That would erode our, our free cash position. So we are comfortable... So we are comfortable taking that position at this point in time. Let me say that this is reviewed annually. We can always bring back a modification or amendment if things aren't working out the way that we have proposed in this policy to you tonight.
And I do understand, I was there also, that, excuse me, that you proposed this to the Finance Committee, and their Finance Committee was unanimous in their decision to go forward with this policy.
It was a unanimous vote, but if we are changing the terms of this draft agreement, we'd have to take it back to them for a second vote.
All right. So there was a few things here tonight. We're going to make that policy change tonight with your suggestion, so that we'll have to go back to the Finance Committee for them to approve or disprove. Okay. Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion based on that recommendation, that of the 50% available for the items, as the town accountant expressed, that 20% be dedicated of that available monies for OPEB and 20% be placed or designated for stabilization.
Is there a second? Sorry. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. So based on what you just said about Finance Committee, and they've already approved this policy, if it's brought back with the amendment and they choose not to accept it, they're really the guiding force behind the budget, they could stick with their original support, and this is support of a financial policy. This isn't budget direction. It's support of, ongoing support of our financial policies. But if the Finance Committee doesn't support the amendments that we've made, they could still go forward with the policy they adopted and give you guidance. I just want--
I think the policy would have, whatever policy is voted would have to be consistent with both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. So if they don't support it, then I would suggest we take something back or modify it that would please both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen.
I mean, I'll support this motion where the CFO supports the recommendations. I would just like, if the Finance Committee has comments, you know, I'd like to hear those if it needs to be brought back to us.
So the motion's been made and seconded regarding this policy for the use of free cash. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We have no tabled items. Board of Selectmen member items, none.
Mr. Chairman, can I just mention something with your permission?
Yes, please.
I know that we talked about the Colin Santa, the Sursa, but we also have the Santa Tour this Saturday from noon to, I think it goes till about 9:30 at night. I encourage residents to go onto arbormassfire.org/santator, it will give you the complete schedule. Santa on the fire truck visits every street in the Town of Auburn, and they have a pretty good schedule. They've, you know, stuck to the schedule and made it on time, and it's great an opportunity for the families to be outside to greet Santa, and sometimes there is a Scrooge following them, but--
Ah, the Scrooge always happens to show up.
I encourage residents to go onto arbormassfire.org and get the information on the Santa Tour.
Okay, thank you. The other thing, I guess we do have a tabled item, and it's been an ongoing thing about our meeting schedule for December. It is now the 12th of December, and our next meeting would have been on the 27th, because it had been that following, the 26th, that Monday night. I would, I know we've taken a vote on tonight with licenses and anything that comes in before December 31st, they are, you know, automatically entered. I don't think there's anything else, so I will look to the Town Manager for direction there and see if there's anything pending that we would have to--
Through the chair, there is not right now. If something were to come in that was urgent with a deadline, we would get in touch with you and notify you that we should probably have that meeting, but at this point, nothing.
Okay, so our next meeting will be on the second Monday of January 2017. I don't know where the time has gone. But that being said, we have minutes in front of us from September 26, 2016, and there was a correction noted by Mr. Carpenter on a vote taken. Is there any other, as a matter of fact, the correction was added into your packets by a full sheet of paper there with the notice on it yesterday. Other than that, was there any errors, corrections, omissions? Being none, I'll accept them as amended. And on that note, I wish everybody a very happy holiday and season, and a very safe holiday season. We'll see you again in January. Thank you. And make a motion to adjourn? Some. Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, and good night.